Good morning, everybody. Please remain standing whilst Mayor Chaplin offers prayers. Thank you.
Good morning, and I greet you all with the peace that calms the tempest of our basest desires. This coming festive season brings not only the joys of celebration of faith and the warmth of company, of friends and family, winter also draws upon us long cold nights and the fear of hunger, cold and poverty. O our Lord, let us be grateful. Let us remember those less fortunate. Our Lord, cause us not to judge them and let us instead recall the scene of the afterlife described by the messenger Muhammad, peace be upon him. When Allah will bring forth his servant and question him thus: "I was hungry, you did not feed me. I did not have clothes, you gave me nothing to wear. I had no shoes and you gave me none. What do you have to say for yourself?" The servant will reply, "O Allah, transcendent is your being. Most definitely, you are beyond these human needs." And in reply, Allah will say, "Had you fed the hungry and clothed those who were naked and given shoes to those who did not have anything to wear, you most definitely would have found my presence with them." And with this, we ask Allah, we ask our Lord to help us be grateful for the position in which he has placed us, a position of responsibility and accountability. And we ask him to give great benefit in this gathering of ours. Amin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please be seated. Now, there are no plans for a fire alarm chest. If you hear the alarm, please leave the building by the nearest exit. Please ensure mobile phones are switched off or on silent. Restrooms are located on all floors, but please ask a member of staff for details, of staff, for details should you require one. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and will eventually be loaded onto the council's YouTube channel. Can I please remind all members that whilst we can disagree politically, please remain respectful to each other whilst dealing with council business? Now, members of the public, members and officers, you are reminded that under the openness of Local Government Bodies Regulations 2014, the press and public may film, audio record, photograph and use social media whilst the meeting is in progress for Part A items only. And as long as no disruption is caused to the meeting, anyone filming is asked to focus their attention on elected members rather than other visitors. Now, certainly, I have to start my announcement by offering my sincere condolences to the family and friends of Assistant Chief Constable Peter Lawson, who died suddenly last Sunday. Peter played a significant role with the Lancashire Resilience Forum during the COVID pandemic. He had an outstanding record of public service and I'm sure that all our thoughts are with his family, friends and police family at this difficult time. Can I now ask that we all stand for a minute silence as a mark of respect for our colleague? Thank you. Now, if you haven't, excuse me. Now, if you haven't already done so, why not take a look at the Fair Trade Store after the meeting? It is on the first floor corridor by the stairs and has a range of fair trade goods and gifts available to purchase. Payment can be made by cash or card. Now, depending on how we progress today, I may adjourn to take a short comfort break, but we will see how we proceed. Item number two. Are there any declarations of interest? Can members indicate if they have any disclosable precuriary interest or personal and prejudicial interest in the items being discussed on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I see it's not on that, it's on the previous issue about adjournment. I see that we've got an amendment by the Liberal Democrat group, which has arrived actually two minutes before this meeting starts. So I'd like to regress to adjournment so our group can look at that if possible. Thank you.
Yeah, I was advised that it would be reasonable to adjourn for a short time period. Thank you, councillor Matty. Yeah, so the adjourn will be immediately before the report will be discussed. Thank you. So I'll repeat this again. Any declaration of interest? No. Thank you. Item number three, minutes of the meeting. Minutes of meeting held on the 19th of October 2023 and 22nd of November 2023. Are members happy that I signed the minutes as a correct record? Thank you, councillor Igbo. Item number four is questions from members of the public. One question submitted, which was included in the council agenda pack, was from Mr. Philip Blundell regarding blue badge holders and the city car parks. Mr. Blundell has asked that his question be postponed and that he may ask his question at council in January. As he is now unable to attend this meeting, I have agreed to Mr. Blundell's request. We also have another question submitted and that's Mr. Rains is here with us today. Can I remind you that once you have asked your question and it has been answered, you are entitled to ask a supplementary question and as long as it relates to the original, you will receive an email response to your question in due course. Mr. Rains, can you now please ask your question?
Thank you. The Ashton Park Community Engagement Consultation Report has now been published. Though prior consultation was mandated by the rules of the levelling up fund bidding process, this was the first and indeed the only occasion which gave ordinary park users the chance to offer their views on the Sports Hub scheme. It produced over 640 responses and the result was unambiguous. I quote now: "In all, it is fair to say that over 80% of the people who attended the consultation events and 79% of the people completing the online consultation and paper questionnaires were against much of the proposed development and most particularly the installation of a 3G football pitch." So can councillor Bailey assure us that at least the 3G pitch proposal is now no longer under consideration?
Thank you. Can I ask councillor Bailey to respond, please?
Yes, thank you for your question. Obviously, maybe just to start off by saying it was lovely to be greeted by many people outside the town hall. Obviously, it's good that they're taking part in democracy and I know some obviously are here as well. So it was lovely to be greeted by a warm welcome on this sunny Thursday morning. In terms of whether the 3G pitch is under consideration, it will be under consideration in the report this afternoon, sorry, later today. However, regarding the consultation, that is one of many things that make up the report. So all councillors in this chamber will have access to that consultation report, the business case and also the report that goes with it as well. And all of that will help them form their decision so they can then vote on the decision that's going to be decided on today.
Thank you councillor Bailey. Mr. Rains, do you have a supplementary questions?
Yes, thank you. That is, of course, a disappointing answer. Can I take you to page 19 of the consultation report to the section called conclusions and particularly to the following sentence where it states, "Strong strategic evidence exists supporting the need for additional 3G FTP facilities in Preston, especially in the local football facility plan and the playing pitch strategy." That judgment is not impartial, not accurate and must be challenged. First, the local facility football plan, which for those who don't know is a Football Foundation document, basically a portfolio of projects they might be interested in investing in. The may I build an argument leading up to a question? Sorry, yes, the local football facility plan comes with an explicit disclaimer that it is not a detailed demand and supply analysis of all pitch provision in a local area, that it cannot be used as a replacement for a playing pitch strategy and it will not be accepted as an evidence base for site change of use or disposal. So if any strong strategic evidence exists, we won't find it in the local football facility plan. The Central Lancashire Playing Pitch Strategy, which is a Sports England document, was produced in 2018. At that time, Sports England and
Mr. Rains, Mr. Rains, can you ask him a question, please? He don't want to report.
Since 2018, the huge environmental damage caused by 3G football pitches has become clear. The European Union has recently banned the microplastic filler used in 3G pitches. Sports England itself has backtracked and now claims to be committed to actively exploring alternative artificial pitch systems and more sustainable infill products. So in view of the fact that we know a lot more in 2023 than we did in 2018, in view of the action that the EU has already taken, in view of the fact that even sports management organisations are now saying we have a big problem with rubber crumb infill, can you at least guarantee that any proposed 3G pitch will have a biodegradable, 100% natural performance filler and not shredded tyres?
Thank you councillor Bailey. Do you want to respond?
Yes, obviously, it's quite difficult because the reporters are below the line item. But what I can say is that if we go ahead with the proposals, we will be delivering a 3G pitch in a sustainable manner along the lines of the UK guidelines and also along with the Football Foundation and FA rules.
Thank you, Mr. Rains. That now concludes questions from members of the public today. Can I thank you for coming to the town hall today to utilise this facility? An officer will now escort you out. Now, we will take item number five, which is the questions to cabinet members, chairs of committees and representatives of outside bodies. Members are entitled to ask a question of any cabinet member or chair of a committee within their portfolio or terms of reference. And only one supplementary question may be asked, provided it is relevant to the original questions. We haven't received any written notification for questions for members appointed to serve on outside bodies. If anyone has any question to ask on the information items on the agenda, including the special urgency decisions, they should do so at this point as another opportunity will not be given when we reach those items. Councillor Middlebrow, please.
My question is to councillor Desai. A couple of meetings ago, councillor, we asked a question about modgov moving onto the cloud. As you know, at the time, there'd been a number of national security breaches, including the election committee and other public institutes. And I think you'd advised at the time that you were having a demonstration of this new system. Can I just ask what progress have we made since then? And will you be looking to support the move to the iCloud as a safe place where protecting the council from cyber attacks?
Thank you for your question. Cyber attacks is very, very, very important and we take very seriously. And our priority at this moment in time is to get our members to do the cyber security training. So many of our members haven't touched any of the cyber security training that we've put out. We put out one training session, one training session per month. Some people have got 20, 30 cyber security training against their names as that's been incompleted. That is our first and foremost priority at this moment in time. And that is our weakest link. In terms of modern gov, we're looking at it. And when progress is made, I'll give the feedback at that time.
Thank you. Have you any supplementary question? Thank you. Councillor Igbo, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Question to councillor Wise. Could you please, in light of the recent increase in that real living wage, could you last a knock on effect on Preston City Council and our staff? How will they be affected? Thank you.
Thank you for the question. The national living wage currently or was £10.42 per hour. The Real Living Wage Foundation has announced that it's now gone up to £12 an hour. You have, I think it's until the 1st of May as a real living wage employer to actually implement it. However, I'm delighted that under the leadership of the Employment Committee of councillor Crowe, the council has again decided that they will implement this for our staff, our permanent staff from the 1st of December. And so they now, that obviously in their December pay receipt, will actually find that they're now getting £12 an hour. This is particularly important from the perspective of people who are women or are from a minoritised community and in fact of our employees. The 60 of our employees will get the rise up to £12 an hour. And of these, 40 are female and 13 are from a declared minority background. So I think it's really commendable that the council is taking a lead to other real living wage employers in the city. And I would encourage people, other employers to follow our example because the fact is we still have a cost of living crisis and it is really hard, particularly in the run up to Christmas, lots of families are really struggling. I can also say that we've got an action group that's meeting on a monthly basis that we hope in the next year to declare ourselves as a real living wage city. And that action group is made up of representatives from the private sector, the public sector and the voluntary and community sector, as well as obviously the council. So I think I look forward to when we can actually become a living wage city. Thank you.
Are you any supplementary councillor?
Just a comment really. I think it's something we can all be proud of. We've always been one of the first authorities to implement and deliver wage. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Rollinson.
At last council, I asked the Chair of Licensing about an issue with especially city centre pubs, the relationship with the police licensing officer. Since then, there's been two hearings, I think, on city centre pubs, both of which have resulted in the pubs either staying open or reopening. So I really think that we've made progress here. I just want to ask the Chair of Licensing whether he feels that spirit of collaboration and cooperation with the licensed venues will continue, especially given the fact that the relationship between the city centre pubs and the police licensing is still not good. And I'm going to be writing to the Police and Crime Commissioner about this. So the city centre pubs, I believe, are going to put a complaint in. The position is just unworkable and unsustainable. But I'm very pleased at the position of the licensing committee at the moment.
Thank you councillor Rollinson. I welcome your comments on the recent results of hearings. As I reiterated at the last time that you asked this question, at the end of the day, as far as I'm concerned, licensing committee's purpose and my purpose as Chair of Licensing is ultimately to be keeping bars and venues open, not to be closing them as long as this is in line with the licensing objectives and keeping people and those venues and their staff's sake in those settings. I'm satisfied that that is the case on those two hearings in question as well. I understand that there are still tensions with the police and with venues locally, but I do believe that the committee has a positive relationship with licence holders and with venues in Preston at the moment. I do indeed want that to continue. Obviously, hearings will be dealt with on a case by case basis, as always, by a committee who take in evidence on all sides. But I do believe that there is a positive relationship. I want to continue to work on that with licence holders, venue holders and with relevant cabinet members, including the cabinet member for culture whose portfolio includes the night time economy.
Thank you councillor Roy. Any supplementary questions? Thank you. Councillor Raisback.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question is directed at councillor Bailey. Given the increased pressure on the park service due to the need to take advantage of the government's levelling up grant, what steps are being taken to ensure that the strategic objectives of the Parks and Green Spaces strategy are still being pursued? In particular, our friends groups being helped to strengthen and grow Strategy Objective Three and our innovative approaches to project delivery being considered Strategic Objective Four.
Yeah, councillor Bailey, do you want to?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, thank you for your question. Firstly, obviously to thank all the volunteers and the Friends Of groups. It was, I think, at the start of summer, I went to the the Green Flag Awards and obviously a number of our Friends Of groups were there. So we know what assistance they provide to the council and obviously all the volunteering that they do for our green spaces. The Park Services do endeavour to absolutely support them in what they do, whether that's supporting with grant funding, all little projects, et cetera, et cetera. Maybe according to some Friends Groups, maybe we don't deliver them as fast as we would like to. But obviously, you know, we're a big council and obviously we do maintain many, many different green spaces up and down the city. All in a recent restructure as well, we've created a new role, Head of Parks and Development, which is going to be taking the strategic lead on parks, including the master plans and working with Friends Group so we can take into account the sort of priorities and objectives of the city. One of the key objectives of the Parks and Green Space Strategy is develop master plans for our parks. Obviously, that has been key to our levelling up bid, you know, such as Ashton Park, which we'll be discussing later, Waverley Park, Moor Park and Grange Park. This new role obviously will help deliver those large scale projects within tight deadlines. And obviously, they will be working with Friends Of groups too. It does mean that they might have an impact on how fast we get around to dealing with Friends Groups. Ultimately, officers have been incredibly busy with what's going on recently with the huge amount of money, the £40 million that are going to be invested into parks thanks to levelling up funds. So maybe we have been a little bit slower recently. However, we will continue working and maintaining the site and working with Friends Groups going forward and obviously continuing onwards and onwards. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bailey. Have you any supplementary?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. You mentioned that a new strategic role is being created. Has that started yet or do you have a timetable for when that will be beginning? That's the first thing. And the second question I'm going to be asking you is, are you aware that some of the groups, their funding is being held up because the council is not responding fast enough to get drawings to the groups or provide different kinds of assistance? So we are actually holding up developments which people are willing to support with money. So if you can answer those two questions, please, Freddie.
Yes, that post is being advertised and the closing date is the end of December. So hopefully, we're going to get someone in post, obviously, once that closing date is done as soon as possible. Obviously, it's no new news to anyone to realise. Obviously, this council has struggled with recruitment, just like a lot of local government authorities and also in the public sector as well. In terms of the speed of it, I actually had a conversation with someone, I think it was from a neighbour council yesterday regarding applications and speed of stuff. It's something we're aware of and obviously we have, shall we say, struggled with capacity, particularly dealing with these £14 million projects within the levelling up fund as well. Hopefully, this is something that, you know, once we get through the stages, then we may be able to, you know, progress this faster. But we obviously, we are trying to deliver as much for the city as possible. And it might mean that we can't act as fast as maybe some of the Friends Group wants us to, but we will continue to work closely with them. And obviously, just to confirm, our parks are continuing to be maintained on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Bailey. Councillor Dwyer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question to the cabinet member for culture. I was just wondering if you could provide an update on the success of the Fire Garden event that was held at Avonham Miller Park recently and also any additional information on the visit of the BBC, I believe, to the Harris coming up soon. Thank you.
Yes, tonight at 6:30 on
Yes, tonight at 6.30 on BBC North West, there will be a small interview with the contractors for the Harris, talking about the regeneration element, because they're doing a series of regeneration projects across the North West. And we were identified as that. Yeah, the fire gun, anyone hands up if you went? Good, good. Okay, thank you. I thought you were there, Stephen. Yeah, so it was over 15,000 people over two days. And it was interesting, because on the first night, there was no fog, so it was very beautiful. And everyone was saying, isn't this amazing? On the second night, somebody said, it looks like a satanic ritual, because it was all this fog was coming in and there were lights everywhere. But we equally had a lot of people there. But I mean, it just goes to show, you put a free event on the city, people will turn up even if it's dark and cold. I had my thermals on, so I was fully protected and fully warm. But yeah, and it's just one of the ways we want it. We want to use the parks. And me and Freddie talk about how we use the parks for culture and arts events. And just to clarify, we had a meeting with the Friends of Winkley Square literally three days ago to talk about the programme of activities. So whilst we're working with them on actually getting culture into the park, we're also having conversations and that they were very constructive and helpful. So that's what, yeah. Next year, I don't know what, maybe you'll have rockets or something taking off. We'll see. Wickham Man. No, I don't think that's appropriate. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Kelly. It was a fantastic event.
Mr Mayor for attending as well and allowing me to walk him around, so his chain wasn't robbed.
Any supplementary question? Yeah, thank you. Councillor Kelly, are you questioned?
Okay. No, it was just to point out, to clarification, that we are working with the Friends groups. And we're happy to work with Friends group, either the Arts and Culture. Yeah. Deputy Mayor's telling me I've got to stand up. He's mayor next year and I've got to keep him happy. We are, from the Arts and Culture side of things, trying to work with the Friends. Because one of the specialties that we do have is we know where grants are and it's identifying the right grants for people and the right, so you know, happier they want to do events on their parks, if they contact us more, we can see if we can support them that way as well.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Item number six. Sorry, any other questions? Yeah, thank you. Item number six is a report on the provision of a night service for rough sleepers in 2023, 24 and 2024, 25. The report was not available at the time, the agenda was printed. However, I will be accepting this item as an urgent one due to the need to provide our rough sleepers with important and necessary services. Councillor Brown, I believe you are moving this report.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much. Obviously councillor Khan, it's her portfolio. She's done lots of work within this area. She's on a much deserved family break at the moment, so obviously I'm taking it in her absence. This is very well welcomed news. It adds to a plethora of measures we're doing to tackle homelessness and rough sleeping within Preston. It's part of the Rough Sleeper Initiative funding, which has come from the government, which is very positive. It's over £300,000 this financial year, next financial year. And basically, what's going to happen is going to pilot an approach to the severe weather emergency protocol, which will deliver a night service that will be delivered by the council directly, initially from St George's on Loon Street, with ongoing work to identify a longer term base. This is basically for people who feel they're not ready to live independently, they're not ready for the responsibility to have somewhere to live permanently, but do need somewhere warm and safe, where they could access showers and bathroom facilities and also have a warm drink and something to eat. So it's very positive. Within the provision we do have, we've not consistently had somewhere that people can just go and sleep and obviously be looked after and be kept safe. And obviously, this is a big positive in terms of that service really. And the good news as well is in line with our community wealth building aspirations, that this service will be provided directly by the councils, it's going to be in source. So we'll be looking to employ fixed term staff and casual staff to take it forward over those two years, Mr Mayor. Any questions? I'm happy to take them. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Kelly. Are there any amendments? Yep. Councillor Rejim.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, I was a bit quick. It was a question really, and I know councillor Khan couldn't be here. So, but it was very, it was good. She came to scrutiny last Friday, I think it was only last Friday. And she went through this report, which is welcomed, Matthew. But also, a couple of issues were raised with regard to it's a communal facility and also it is for men, women or any gender. And councillor Khan agreed to go back and look on that, because I think that might be a bit of a stumbling block. If there were individual pods when people have their own privacy, I think that would be a real good step forward. But I hope councillor Khan does go back and if you could take that back as well, thank you.
Sue, as ever, very positive contribution from yourself. This is actually raised internally within our group. Obviously, we do want to make sure that, my understanding is there will be a facility or a way to make that happen if there are women that need to be, that have sensitivities in terms of where they're sleeping and feeling uncomfortable with that. There's also minority communities that might have needs as well, so we're going to make sure that it's built into the facility. I don't have the precise details, but did raise it with the Deputy Chair of Executive and we'll get back in contact with you in due course. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Is anybody else, any? Councillor Henshaw.
I'm not councillor Henshaw, but anyway.
Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to say really, as a member of the Champion for Women, that I do have concerns also along those lines. And I think that safety is of the most importance, isn't it?
Thank you. Councillor Kelly.
It's just to say, actually, obviously, being in the night time economy, I do get to walk around. And actually, when you sit down and have a chat with these people and make them feel valued and try and understand it, and they respect what we're trying to do, they also understand the system is busy. But I think it's just important to realise that they've all got life stories. And, you know, if you sit down and have a cup of tea, sometimes a share of pizza with them, it's making them feel human again. And that's, you know, I think the very simple things that we can do. But that they do recognise what we're doing, you know. It shouldn't be that it gets to minus one, then we put accommodation. And this should be something that we're targeting and doing as a city. And I'm really, really pleased that this is happening.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Brown, do you want to come back?
Just to say that the provision will actually run from November to March. So obviously, a lot of what we've done is when it's really cold, this is going to be there through all the weathers in the winter. And just in terms of the specifics of the questions raised, which are very, very valid for everyone, we'll get back with a written answer. I don't have all the, not my portfolio, I do know about it, I'm involved with it. But Nwida works very, very closely with officers and she would have had those answers. Obviously, I'll get that information to members as soon as I can. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, courage. Now, item number seven is a report on the Lancashire County Combined Authority. The report was not available when the council agenda was published due to information not being available at the time. However, I'm accepting the item as an urgent one as there is a need for the council to respond to a consultation exercise which ends prior to the date of the next meeting. Councillor Brown, are you moving the report?
Mr Mayor, I am, yes. Obviously, I've asked this is put on the council agenda, because this is very important in terms of the devolution arrangements, which are potentially coming to our county. It's something we've been trying to, I think, secure since 2014. We obviously do have some progress of sorts. However, I just want to say as leader, how profoundly I'm disappointed in our group is, at the lack of ambition in this deal. My own view is we need an Andy Burnham Lancashire, we need a tier three deal. Many of us Labour districts have actually entered into a process of negotiation in good faith with the Conservative-led county council. They wanted a tier two deal, that was obvious, because obviously the current leader, Philip Lulism, was very keen, obviously, to remain in charge of the county and that through that process. But it's very, very disappointing, to be honest, and we feel that the bigger opportunities we missed out on. Additionally, there's a process called Lancashire 2050, which brings all 14 to 15 leaders together, which are the two unitaries, the county, the 12 districts. We've really tried engaging with that within Preston very, very positively in terms of policies. Again, we feel we're being fobbed off consistently by the Conservative County Council. It's basically just not fair. So we need to say that this is a big missed opportunity and how we're going to respond to the consultation, which we will do. So from our perspective, we need to ensure that districts have a meaningful voice through this consultation, that we play a part. It's absolutely ridiculous that our tier of local government is the closest to the community and the Conservative Secretary State is excluding districts from these combined authorities, so we don't get a vote. But more importantly, the shared prosperity fund that we're delivering, 5.4 million, that's upskilling people, that's moving towards net zero, that's delivering a digital broadband service for poorer communities, a volunteer centre, sports facilities. I do not want that going to this combined authority, because there's a big mistrust of whether that will actually be spent on some of the amazing things we are spending it on now. So again, this is within the report as well. And finally, in terms of what some of our Labour colleagues are doing in Liverpool city region and Greater Manchester, so things like having publicly controlled buses, things like having fair work charters, so we encourage employers to pay the real living wages, we're doing here, recognised trade unions, have mental health strategies for employees. Now, this is what Labour Merse and Labour Devolved Arrangements are doing now. But again, no movement at all on things that could be done now like that by the Conservative County Council. So we're highly disappointed. It's like, it's like getting a box of chocolates at Christmas, like Quality Street. And then at the end, you've got two or three chocolates that nobody wants. It's like we're left with that as a devolution deal. If we could do a lot better, we should have a Ferrero Rocher in terms of a devolution deal at Christmas. So that's it, Mr Mayor. Happy to take any questions. I'm sure Sue's going to agree on this. But we're deeply disappointed, we need to say so, but we're going to work constructively with partners to move the city forward regardless. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Rollinson. Councillor Rejim.
Here's some chocolates for you. Look, come on, let's lighten up a bit. It all feels very dire and down today. I don't know why, but right.
I intentionally got a celebration, so that top.
And I'm glad you're here, because you keep us entertained always, is all I can say.
Any chocolates to left, they will be going.
Be quiet. I know you're disappointed, Matthew, but you're a dual hatter, like I am, and like members of your group and other groups on the county, and we've been involved in the process all through. And we know we had a two and a half hour, interesting meeting at county recently. So as I said then, and I'll say now, districts will have a voice. We know that the actual act doesn't give districts a voice. If that's in the act, there's nothing you can do about that. They are, you've got the commitment that you will get a voice. The shared prosperity fund, it only recently came direct to districts. It was county before then. And I can draw your attention to page 30 of the devolution document that actually talks about the shared prosperity fund. And it will be aligned with devolution deal responsibilities. This would mean that the CCA, which is the Combined Authority, would have such responsibilities from 25, 26 in carrying out this role. And it goes on. Delivery of these functions will build on existing district-led delivery arrangements and align with the Lancashire 2050 strategy, as agreed by all local authorities in Lancashire, to ensure that the needs of residents can be effectively addressed. So it's okay, disappointed, I get it. But let's get this, it's the beginning of a journey. It means more money. Liverpool, Manchester, they started off a long time ago with only a bit of money and look where they are now. We can only have ambition and this is just the start. And we're happy to support your report. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rejim. Councillor Borrow, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It is a rubbish deal, but this is a document about the consultation. And I went on the LCC website about the consultation and it talked about events, consultation events. And the only two I could find was two this week, one in Lancaster and one in Skelmorsdale. Can the leader say whether there will be one in Preston before the end of this consultation event? And if he doesn't know, can he find out from county who seem to be running all this? Perhaps when he gets at the county hall this afternoon, he can ask that question of the leader and perhaps find out what consultation we are having in Preston on this very important bit of change to the systems of local government in Lancashire. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Borrow. Councillor Potter, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Merry Christmas, everyone. Yeah, I mean, as been already said, the deal isn't actually a lot of anything really. It's better than what we've got, but it's nothing to get excited about, is in essence of it. But it's interesting that also, as this deal came out, there was a report in the press that 20% of one in five councils is facing imminent threat of going bankrupt or bust within the next two years. And so this is actually almost a distraction from the real risk, which is local government funding and the lack of it. And but it seems evidently clear that the current Conservative administration in Westminster is waiting till after the next general election in the hope it will be someone else's problem. And for me, and I think, I don't know if it's still a unified position across all three groups, that the only way forward is actually a new set of unitaries in Lancashire, where you can have proper powers with a decent economic base to actually make those effects work. That is what we should be striving for. And anything is just almost paping over the cracks over what we've got at the moment.
Thank you, councillor Potter. Councillor Rollinson, do you want to come back? No. Councillor Brown?
Very briefly, points all round. David said I will find out if there will be a consultation event within Preston. My own view is that I just do not trust the county council to listen. Because obviously, I've this role for some years now and my own experience is you don't listen. And the words are quite reassuring in terms of the shared prosperity. But from the county council's behaviours, how they've offloaded things on to ourselves in recent years. And we've had to do things they should be doing, like a youth zone and pay for the tran bridge to repair the rest of it. There's very little trust. And that sadly is reflected by especially other Labour district leaders, to the extent that eight of us, including the former Labour district leader of Burnley, we've had to write to the Secretary State asking this process is paused due to the lack of ambition and the fact we as districts are not being properly engaged within the process. So I will ask the question, I want to see a consultation here by the county. I just don't trust them. It's as simple as that. So as usual, within Preston, we just knew what we need to do in a very resilient way, despite the obstacles in our way. But we'll try again and we'll see if they're prepared to listen. Just can't get past the fact that, you know, we will respond to the consultation. We'll probably respond collectively with other Labour group leaders. However, the lack of ambition in this deal, even saying things around aspirations in the long term, is really disappointing. I think that's the key, that's part of this. We're missing a really big opportunity, Mr Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Any more questions? Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number eight is a report on the Barton Neighbourhood Development Plan Final Decision. Councillor Brown, will you be moving the report?
Yes, I'll be taking this forward, Mr Mayor, just today. And I want to thank councillor Borrow and officers for the work they've done on this. This is a neighbourhood plan that's been prepared by Barrett Barton Parish Council in association with my school and Billsmore Parish Council. Apparently, it's been pursued since 2017. And there's a situation where very recently, there's a referendum. So on the 9th of November... So on the ninth of November two thousand and twenty-three, ninety-four point four percent of votes cast in the Barton Neighbourhood Plan referendum were in favour of the council using the Barton Neighbourhood Plan to help decide planning applications in the neighbourhood area. So the council, that was a legal duty in line with the neighbourhood planning regulations, following the positive referendum result, to bring the plan into legal force and make the plan, which means adopt the plan, the legal term is make the plan into Preston's development framework. If you actually look at the documents, it's things about protecting green infrastructure, housing, protecting assets, active travel. And obviously, good news, we've got a number of these plans now in a number of areas, including in Fishwick and St Matz, which is very positive as well. So they're actually actively setting their own agendas through the planning process within the communities they're a part of. So I hope it's non-controversial. I need to pop to Barton a little more. I don't get invited that much by the former deputy leader, but I need to, probably need to pop down at some point in the near future and actually see how this is going to work. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Brown. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Rittum, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, it would be nice to see you in Barton, the Liberals are there quite often, I understand. But it's very good news for Barton, and we've got another referendum coming up in January for Plumpton, which will hopefully equally good news, and I hope that goes through, and it's just a great story, so absolutely happy to support. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yeah, I'd just like to congratulate Barton Parish Council in getting this work done. I know it's a very onerous job and it's gone on for some time, also because the offices have helped. So I'm very happy to see that plan put into position. And if you're ever in Barton, Matthew, you're more than welcome to drop in for a cup of tea. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thompson. Any other questions? Councillor Kelly, do you want to come back?
Just to confirm, I have been in Barton, and I do like the plants from the bar. Comes as a surprise to you, but actually I do have a lovely field day event, which I attended. And it was the first time I ever seen a band on the back of a lorry, but it would be, and I'll grimze, oh, sorry. Oh, no.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Brown, do you want to come back? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number nine is the Audit Committee Annual Report twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving this report?
I'm happy to move the report, the Audit Committee about a difficult few years with the statements of accounts since Covid, due to the reporting of Covid funding. They look like they're getting on top of that now. The members of audit and the officers involved provide a very valuable function to this council. It's worth noting that this Labour group still gives the chair of audit to the opposition. We welcome the balance and the accountability of that. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Rollinson. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Brown. Yeah, councillor Hart?
Just to say thank you for your comments, and you're quite right that there have been a challenging times in making sure that we're getting back on track and moving forward. It doesn't seem that long ago since we brought the last report. I think that just shows that the work that's taken place in order to try and get everything back on track. There are a number of things which have been out of our control in order to do that, but the team, the committee are working very hard to do that. So I just support and thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Hart. Is there any more questions on this item? Councillor Rollinson, do you want to come back? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number ten is a report on the Audit Committee Terms of Reference. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving the report?
This looks like a very useful update to that committee's terms of reference. I don't know if the chair wants to say more about it.
Thank you, councillor Rollinson. Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Hart. Thank you, councillor Hart.
Thank you. Just briefly, you're quite right, councillor Rollinson, it is both useful and in line with the recommendations that have been put forward for us to make sure that we've got everything in line as it should do. And there's very little more than that to say. Thank you.
Any more questions? Councillor Rollinson, do you want to come back? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Scary. Thank you. Item number eleven is a report on the Localised Council Tax Support Scheme twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving the report?
Yes, that short period of detente right there is over now, because we're back to the politics. Obviously, this is a function we've had for ten years now, since the Conservative and Liberal Democrat coalition took one billion pounds off the poorest people in this country and told councils to to either absorb the cost or start charging people on benefits, council tax, which, you know, there's just no culture, people on benefits, to pay council tax, even even ten years later. There's really no culture, no capacity, people on benefits, to pay council tax. But I argued at the time that we needed to, well, if we just simply were in a position to absorb the cost at the time, we in the last ten years, we've had three major savings programmes alongside all the, you know, savings to find, probably totaling ten million or more. We could have expected our budget in normal times to probably double, virtually double what it is now since austerity. But ten years later, when we're still only collecting fifty percent of this money that we ask for people on benefits, we're seriously starting to wonder whether it's more trouble than it's worth. And I think it would probably be an ambition of this group over the next few years, certainly within the life of the forecast, to bring this contribution down to zero, if we can possibly find the funding. But this year, we can't, we can't do it. We are still running with a deficit which won't resolve itself until we know the outcome of the animate borrowing, which obviously has a huge effect on this council's finances. So in a year or so, we might be in a better position to know whether we can do this. So we will continue with this scheme for at least another year. It's reluctantly, obviously, we don't, we're not draconian when it comes to people who can't pay. If people can't pay, we will, we will wait until they can pay. If they won't pay, that's a different matter. If they can afford to pay, then whatever it is, whether it's council tax or whatever, we will collect the money. We have to, we have to provide the public services. But unfortunately, for one more year, we will propose a scheme as it stands, notwithstanding any detailed changes to benefits and things which we will delegate to the officers.
Is that seconded? Thank you, councillor Brown. Any questions? Councillor Saxena?
At the ONS committee last Friday, we were interviewing councillor Khan on her portfolio. And one issue that did get raised was the effect of the fact that people are having less and less to spend, having to make more priorities, change their priorities, and also the effect of a lot of current social issues. And I'm just wondering, to what extent is the officer team looking at this and making sure we're ahead of the game rather than having to react to it? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Saxena.
Yeah, collection rates are down. There's no doubt about it. I mean, over a period of time, we tend to collect a similar amount each year. But in year, it's, each year it seems more of a struggle, and the rates go down. And obviously, we're now in this cost of living crisis. And as councillor Saxena rightly says, and councillor Khan scrutiny, people have less money to spend at the moment because things are costing more. And it's, and it's very, very tough out there, and this council recognizes that across the board, right through the council. And we have a lot of measures already in place. We're very lucky at this council, really. We've still got debt and benefits advisory team, which a lot of councils have done away with or cut to the bone. We have officers who prefer to talk to people who can't pay. We have, you know, hardship schemes, and we have household support fund, which we're delivering. We support a lot of local groups and charities through our grants. There are multiple avenues for people to find help. And we really, we encourage people to use that help and find those routes as much as possible through our social media, through our e-newsletter, and any way we can get the message out. There's always people you don't reach, and it's quite often the people who really need that help. And when you're in trouble, it's the hardest thing to do sometimes, to talk, you know, to ring somebody up and say, I just, I just can't pay, I just can't do it. And we really encourage people to do that, to tell us if you're struggling to pay, and we can, we can signpost you, and we can help in a lot of cases. So please do that.
Thank you. Councillor Borrow, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think it's useful at a time when Conservative MPs are lobbying the Chancellor to abolish inheritance tax and raise the forty percent tax rate. It's useful just to be reminded of the attacks they have made over the last thirteen and a half years on the poorest families. And I'm grateful to Martin for explaining how this scandal is still going on, as is the bedroom tax, as is the freeze on housing benefit for several years. The increase that's gone up next year doesn't replace the freeze that's taken place for several years. The problems over families with more than two children not getting housing benefit, all these things that the Tories have done. You don't hear any of their MPs saying, well, if you've got a bit more money, Richie, why don't you spend it on them? It's all about, spend it on us, please. It's all about values and beliefs, what brings you into politics, just discussing what's going on. The sooner the shambles is over and they're out of office, the better. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Borrow. Councillor Brown, do you want to come back? Seconded? You seconded, yeah. Do you want to speak? Councillor Rollinson, do you want to come back? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number twelve is a report on the Media Treasury Management Monitoring Report twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving the report?
Don't need me notes for this, it doesn't roll off the tongue, this stuff. So the council is funding thirty-one point nine million of capital expenditure from internal cash balances. As a short-term measure, new external borrowing will be required from twenty-four, twenty-five to fund this capital expenditure, and the council is exploring options for this borrowing. Currently, debt of the council is twelve million, which is historic debt. Investment income is currently above budget, and the surplus is being transferred to a reserve to offset future borrowing costs. And we've been using internal borrowing to fund capital expenditure, which is the most cost-effective way of doing that. Members previously made a decision to set aside additional interest receipts, which are being received. By doing this, it's mitigating the additional borrowing costs on the animate scheme in a number of ways. By having cash balances, it delays when we need to borrow. We will liaise with our consultants to assess the most preferable ways to use this additional interest, which may add up to around two million pounds by the time we need to do the borrowing. We could also use that just to smooth the early repayments of any debt and ease the cost on the forecast. There is some capital expenditure slippage that was expected, really, with all the, you know, the huge amount of capital schemes that were undertaken at this time.
Thank you. Is this seconded? Yeah, thank you. Do you want to speak, councillor Hart? No, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Are there any amendments? Do you want to come back? Oh. Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number thirteen is a report on the calendar of meetings, twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. Councillor Rollinson, will you be moving the report?
I'll just move it, yeah.
Is that seconded? Thank you. Any amendments? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, his courage. Item number fourteen is a notification of changes to the membership of committees. Are there any changes to be reported, leader? Yes, councillor Brown?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Mayor. Just very briefly, obviously, we have a vacancy. I want to thank councillor Borrow for his time within the Cabinet, planning and regulation. The vacancy will be filled by councillor Afsal, which is very positive from our perspective, which means that our executive will be balanced evenly between men and women. which is very positive from our perspective, which means that our executive will be balanced evenly between men and women. I remember he was criticised by the Liberal Democrats when we had six male cabinet members, just as recently as 2017. I think we're right to do so. We're now at gender balance and also the executive reflects the ethnicity of the lay group, which is very positive. We may need to look at the portfolio because there's things within peer reviews and other things we need to look at around that. But obviously, welcome to Amber, to the team within the executive. That will then free up a vacancy for vice chair planning, I believe. We need to go through an internal process to look at how that's appointed. And then very finally, I believe that councillor Nathan needs to be confirmed as the appointment for community gateway again, because my understanding is wanting to potentially appoint him sooner rather than later, because we were expecting him to be in post until May. But apparently, they're wanting to have a three year term. So we need to confirm that as well, because that was a decision at last council. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brown. Now, item number 15 is a notice of motion submitted by councillor Close entitled Fireworks. Councillor Close, please, can you move your motion?
Thank you, Chair. Initially, I did think that the timing of this motion might be wrong, because we are literally like four weeks or so after Bonfire Night. But then I realised that actually, to do it now is probably the best time to do it, because what I hope is that you will still remember how loud those fireworks were on and around Bonfire Night. We know that they're used throughout the year by people to mark different events and celebrations. And they do bring a lot of enjoyment to people, I acknowledge that. But they also cause significant problems and fear for other people and for animals. So for vulnerable adults with PTSD or noise sensitivity, fireworks are just like a living nightmare. And I think it's important to remember that fireworks are not just on Bonfire Night. So the ward in which I live, I think we heard the first fireworks in mid October and the last fireworks on the 22nd of November. So that is a long time for those animals and those people in that kind of area. The noise now with fireworks can be up to 120 decibels, with some of the really big professional ones going up to 175 decibels. I didn't know what that meant either. For me, they were just numbers. But actually, 175 decibels is like standing next to the speaker for the loudest rock bands. And rock bands are great. The noise from fireworks isn't. And it also can have a significant impact on the hearing of people who are getting way too close to those fireworks. So animals that are affected not only suffer psychological distress that can cause injuries. So this year, on Lancashire encounters and for actual Bonfire Night, there are a number of residents whose cats and dogs bolted because of the fireworks. And sadly, not all of those returned, which is really sad. But I think we also need to remember it's not just about pets, it's also about farm animals and service animals. And service animals are really, really important. So in particular, guide dogs, hearing dogs, assistance dogs. They enable people to live full and active, independent lives, but not if they're spooked by fireworks, they cannot work again and they are retired. And that's absolutely heartbreaking when it takes two years, for example, to train a guide dog. So sometimes it can be treated. So where dogs have got a noise phobia, which fireworks makes worse, sometimes it can be treated, but that costs money. And it can be treated with behaviourist, it can be treated with medication, but it costs money. And we know that our residents just don't have the money to medicate their pets or are willing to go to the doctors themselves, you know, where people have got PTSD, they often don't tell us about it. There's a need to raise awareness about the impact of fireworks on animals. But I also want to encourage us to kind of start as a council and say, we will commit to using quieter fireworks. I know that people enjoy fireworks. I know that some people won't be happy with this motion, because they really do like the big firework displays. But I think sometimes we've got to go with those people for whom it isn't an enjoyment and try and find a really good balance. So what I'm asking the council to 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 resolve is to, where possible, to use quieter fireworks. So, and they are available. And this isn't, I have to say, this is not groundbreaking or, excuse the pun, rocket science, because lots of other councils across the country have already done it. So we're not doing anything that is really, really unusual. But I want to ask the council to use quieter fireworks where they can and to encourage other providers to use them as well. To request that where people have put in public firework displays on, that they give the council as much information as possible, so that through our website, such as Visit Preston, we can let people know where those displays are, whether they're going to be using ordinary or quieter fireworks and what the perimeter is. So that, for example, my colleague this year, whose family had to drive their guide dog into the countryside, and somebody that had to take their child with noise sensitivity out of the area. If we can advertise where those displays are, then people have got the information, haven't they? We'd also consider, you know, in line with resources, I would like to ask the council to actively promote an awareness campaign. So to use some of the information that the RSPCA, guide dogs, et cetera, puts out, for the council to put that on the social media sites.
Sorry, excuse me councillor Close, you have 10 seconds left, so can you wind up, please?
Including the bit that you've just said, obviously, as well. Don't be taking up five seconds. So I also want the council to write, for the chief executive to write to the LGA to seek support from across local government in order to lobby the UK government, because there needs to be more legislation. And I thank my colleague councillor Derby for the work that he's previously done on a motion. And when you look, fireworks are very, very easy to buy. And also councillor Kelly, if you're putting rockets on Avon Park, let's have quiet ones. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Close. Is that seconded?
I'm happy to second that motion. Just to say, people might be surprised, I'm an avid listener to the Arches. Ever since they did a domestic abuse story several years ago, which was amazing. And they actually did a story earlier this year, around November, on a horse bolting and being severely injured because of fireworks. So they had a little campaign about silent fireworks. So that's probably most of you didn't hear that, but certainly I did. So that just shows, that's one way of actually raising awareness is when social media, when socials actually promote these sorts of things. So, yeah, I'm happy to second.
Thank you councillor Wise. Councillor Witten, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Phantom mind season is definitely upon us. Cast your eyes back or your ears or remember three years ago in December 2020, when the same notice of motion, almost identical, was put forward by councillor Derby and seconded by councillor Darnutt, who was on this council at the time, and got turned down by Labour because you could. And it was almost identical. It's a bit of a shame, really, that three years later, we're doing exactly the same thing, but this time it's come from you. So it will go through. We have no issue with it. We're not going to take our bat and ball home and have a tantrum because we were turned down three years ago. No, 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 we're going to support it or have a free vote. We can do what we want. But it is a good notice of motion, but we could have done this three years ago. And then councillor Kelly wouldn't have had his big rocket or whatever he was doing on the park. So anyway, enough said. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Sorry, councillor Witten. Councillor Thompson, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It would come as no surprise that I do like big bangs. And I think fireworks, the problem with fireworks is it's about responsible use of fireworks and how big. Some of these fireworks are absolutely massive. And if you're going to put them in small urban gardens, it can be a little bit out of order for the residents. And I take on board the bit about pets and people with PTSD, people with autism, all these sorts of things. But it's down to people acting responsibly with fireworks. Some of the big fireworks, I mean, we never used to have these big things, but they are a fairly recent thing. I remember buying, when I was a kid, you get a standard box of fireworks. They didn't make very big bangs at all. So I think it's about responsibility of using them. And, I mean, I had a gun dog who loved the fireworks, but he was looking for pheasants going down and he would really not. But anyway, I get, I get distracted. So one of the things is, I think, if we really want to do something about this issue, is actually limit the use, limit the time when you can let fireworks off. Because as you say, if people are expecting fireworks to go off, they can take measures to protect the pets or protect the people who have got, who are sensitive to it. And, you know, we could limit it to a couple of days either side of the fifth of November. We could limit it to New Year's Eve and also other religious, I think Diwali, isn't it, they like letting off fireworks? You could do it then. But it's down to government to do that. And I think the problem is actually going that far and doing that. It's how then do you enforce it and administrate? When I, I bought some gunpowder quite a few years ago, and I had to have an explosive licence to do so. And it was renewed every year. So, you know, some of these big fireworks got more gunpowder in than I ever bought. So I think there's also, there's an angle there that we could restrict the size of actual fireworks that are sold. And if people want to do a public display fireworks, then they have to go through health and safety, get a licence and everything else. So I can sympathise with your point of view, but I can't support this because I don't think it goes far enough in adjusting the problem. It's sort of like, it's an opinion that maybe if we all had less noisy fireworks, it will be okay. But again, you've still got the problem of how are you going to enforce it? Are you going to administrate it? So I'll just, I'll abstain from this one, I think. I'll vote against it. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Councillor Derby, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, as has already been acknowledged, this was brought forward, this is exactly three years ago. But I do thank councillor Close for bringing it back again, and in fairness, building upon and improving the motion that was here three years ago. And doing so to bring the Labour Party onside, which is obviously great, because it means that now hopefully it will, it will pass. And it will hopefully lead to an improvement in the quality of lives for both people and animals for whom fireworks are a problem. Obviously, I'll be supporting it. I hope my group will be supporting it. I don't think there's any need to build on it further, but to say thank you very much councillor Close for bringing it back.
Thank you councillor Derby. Any more questions? Councillor Wise, do you want to come back? Sorry? No, no, yeah. Councillor Close?
Yes, I do, thank you. On, stand up. So, yeah, thank you councillor Witten. I was aware, and I tried to incorporate all the very best points, and I met with Neil and we discussed it. So that, that I think is really good in the spirit of kind of partnership working. And I believe the original motion three years ago had too many powers in it that we wouldn't have been able to carry out, which is why it wasn't passed at the time. On the issue of there being kind of too much in this motion for some people and thinking, you know, we're not going to be able to do anything about it. I absolutely agree, we cannot change everything, we cannot stop those pop up fireworks shops, we cannot stop young people buying them. But I do believe we've got to start somewhere, and that's what councils across the country are doing. If we just say this is too big for us and we're not going to be able to do it, we're not going to be able to change everything, then we won't. But I think if we can do it and start somewhere, then potentially, it does start to affect things. Thank you. So I hope that you support it. Thanks.
Thank you councillor Close. Any further questions? No? Any amendments to this motion? Can we now vote on this item? All those in favour, please show. Anyone against? Any abstentions? Thank you, Skarid. Item number 16 is the leader's report. Councillor Brown, do you wish to speak on the report, which is for noting only? Thank you. Can we now note the item? Thank you. Item 17 is a special urgency decision, but there are none to report to this meeting. The next meeting of full council will be held on Thursday 25th, January 2024 at 2pm in the Town Hall, Preston. Do you want us to adjourn the meeting for 10, 15 minutes? 10 minutes? So we should be back by quarter to 12. Is that okay? Thank you very much. Thank you.